Council for seven o'clock on July 18th. All council members are present with the exception of council member Hendricks. Will you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you all very much. Our first item tonight is public comment. Before we get started on public comment, just a note for the agenda. Item 6B, which is a public hearing on the 20 Mile Village F2 AMD1 L9B1, also known as the Pony Express Drive and 20 Mile Gas Station. We have received a request from the applicant for that to be moved out to, Michelle, to the first council meeting in August. So there won't be a public hearing on that tonight, but we'll handle that by a motion when we get there. So if you're here to speak about the... Oh, John? First council meeting in September?
September 6th is the continuation.
Okay, thank you for that. All right. So that'll be on for September 6th on your calendars. All right, with that, we'll move on to public hearing. Public comment is an opportunity for town residents and other interested individuals to speak on items not on the agenda. This comment period is limited to 30 minutes total time, with each individual allowed up to three minutes to speak. So if you've signed up in the room, I don't, I have a couple on my sign up sheet. We also offer by Zoom, and you can email on the day of the meeting to the towns clerk before five o'clock. So first up on that is Michelle Toddlin.
Oh, no, no, sorry, I didn't mean to...
Okay, all right. And the Sterlings were going to talk on the, on the gas station. So there's not anybody else wishing to make public comment? Chris, do we have anybody on Zoom?
If you're present on Zoom and wish to make a general public comment, please raise your hand. There is not.
Great. And so we'll move on to reports, items and comments from mayor and council. I'll start to my far left, council member Hefta.
Good evening. This past week, I attended the Douglas County Homeless Initiative meeting. And at that meeting, we went over some items related to a reintegration officer, the HART acronym, which was Homeless Engagement Assistance and Resource Team, and no panhandling signs. In the no panhandling signs being placed up eventually will allow the general public to understand that there are better ways to support the homeless population, namely the nonprofit community, which supports many nonprofits that support the homeless community instead of direct giving of funds to individuals. And we also talked about the uniform code enforcement approach in a wildlife initiative as well, and a cleanup discussion approach as well, because many times when people are homeless in the community, there is significant cost related to cleanup from any type of camping, illegal camping that might have happened from part of that population, and that costs money to clean up such an area. I'd also like to say, on a personal note, I've been enjoying the Cherry Creek Trails by Mostenbacher in Salisbury Park, and I got a new mountain bike. So this is exciting news.
Council member Barrington.
I don't have anything to report since last week. Thank you.
Councilman Dyak?
Thank you very much. I attended the Parker Arts Season Announcement. I guess the big announcements were Sarah Evans, up and coming country singer, coming to the Pace Center in November, and for you 80s slash 90s fans, Night Ranger. 16 million records sold, I believe, I read in the Parker Arts.
And retained.
Season announcement thing. I'm a sponge when it comes to music. I also attended the Farmer's Market. We had an old initiative called Connect with Council. Myself and a few other council members were there to answer questions, citizen questions regarding anything from high level planning to transportation. I also had some duties as the Douglas County Subregional Forum Chair. We are in the process of reviewing about $21 million of applications for transportation projects. We have a little less than $14 million to allocate, so they are in the process of being scored. Mr. Hudson is our representative, Chris Hudson, and we will get that information, and in our August meeting, we will discuss and hopefully settle on a submittal to Dr. Cog. That is all. Thank you.
Excellent. Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, other than going to Farmer's Market with a few other of the council members, I haven't had any other major meetings this week, but I have to tell you, Farmer's Market was packed. In the heat, amazing. I didn't expect that many people to be there in that heat. So it was interesting.
Councilman Rivera?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I attended the Season Announcement for Pace, outstanding event, great entertainment, good food, and just great to see a lot of good Parker folk that contribute to Parker Arts. Had a coffee meeting with an HOA president that had been, or is continually, continually working with the town to work out some agreements that needed to be put in stone, and they just wanted, wanted me to know how appreciative they were that the town takes the opportunity to work on those relationships. And it was a, it was a nice, nice cup of coffee to enjoy with that person. And then Sunday, definitely out in the heat, it was busier in the morning, and as the heat warmed up, it kind of slowed down, which was good, because the same thing happened with me. I got, I got very tired towards the afternoon, and, and it was, it was a long day, but it was great to see a lot, a lot of citizens with some great, great questions, some great insight, and just always enjoyable to, to be able to talk to some folks. So, great day.
Thanks, sir. I just had two things to report. We did a, with the Chamber of Commerce, we did the ribbon cutting for the grand reopening of the Stacey James Institute. It was kind of weird to be there. She's been in business for, what, 10, 15 years now, but she's doing amazing things in training young men and women in the cosmetology field, really, really growing that business, and she's expanding into Denver. So it's a, a part of that whole process. And also, our town manager, our chief of police and myself, had lunch with the district attorney last Wednesday. We were joined by the other mayors in the region, as well as the other chiefs of police, and talked about auto theft, a lot about fentanyl, and really about crime in general, and how it's really, our numbers in Douglas County remain low. Congratulations to our chief and his team for that. Parker's almost not on the map as of this lunch, but I'm sure, you know, as you all know, crime is just growing. So for all of those that are looking for a group to support, our police department is that group to support, because they're keeping us all safe and are keeping our numbers down. So again, congratulations, chief, to you and your team, based on that meeting. With that, we'll go to something even more exciting than police, and that's the presentation of our financial statement. Rhonda, you want to make the introductions?
All right. Good evening, mayor and council. My name is Rhonda Willie, Controller for the town. Per Section 9.15 of the Town Charter, the town is required to complete an annual audit. The town engaged Plant Moran to audit the town's 2021 financial statements, and also to complete a separate review of the cultural fund statements for the SCFD grant. The cultural fund financials have been reported to SCFD, and the town financial statements were filed with the state auditor and the Government Finance Officers Association. And I emailed you all the link last week to the financial statements, along with the governance letter. And the final step to the audit is when the auditors give a quick overview of the statements. So tonight, we have Josh Eadie present, and Tim St. Andrew via Zoom, is he, to discuss the 2021 audit.
Thank you, Rhonda. And if you could again state your, your name and company for the record, as well as your associate online, just for the record, before you get started with your presentation?
Sure. My name is Josh Eadie with Plant Moran, and with me is Tim St. Andrew, who will start the presentation by Zoom.
Great, thank you.
Hopefully.
Says he's talking, but we're not hearing.
We'll give Tim another minute here to see if we can get him, get the audio working. Otherwise, I'll step in.
And Mr. Eadie, you don't get graded on technical approach, don't worry. We give everybody the pass here on that.
Well, if we can't hear Tim in here, then I can get started.
Tim, can you hear me now?
He says yes, you can hear me.
Acting as translator for the evening is Mr. Barr from...
Tom?
All right, well, I can get started just to, in the interest of time.
Let's go ahead.
I know you guys have been here a long time. So first of all, I'd just like to thank Rhonda and Mary Lou and the whole accounting team here. This is not a small lift to get, get this done. You notice that the annual comprehensive financial report is 130 pages. That is rather significant. It requires a lot of work on our team, but also on the finance team. So very much thanks to them. The audit opinion itself is an unmodified opinion. Basically, what that means is you can rely on the numbers in these financial statements. You will notice that in the opinion, there is an emphasis of matter. That is for a prior period adjustment. When we audited this year, there was something that we looked at, which is the intangible assets, and restated those back when Gatsby 51 Accounting Standard was implemented back in 2011. There was an, basically a practical expedient to use, to take anything, all these intangibles, and not account for them at that point. And so that was what was elected here, and so that was reflected in these statements. I also have the letter in front of you. This is the end of audit letter. We would have sent you a letter to begin the audit process. Basically, this is the bookend to that letter, and if we had any deviations, things like that, that would appear here. Thankfully, the audit went well, so there are only a couple things that I would like to point out here. On page three, there is the material weakness. That is because we did identify three entries that we had to make. I've already covered the first one, related to the intangible assets. There is also a liability recorded to insurance for incurred but not reported. And then finally, there was tax receivable and deferred inflows related to the Parker Authority for reinvestment. So because we had to make those entries, that's why you see that here. That is a one-time issue. I would not anticipate that being reflected in next year's letter. The other item I'd like to point out here is on page eight. It relates to an upcoming accounting standard, Gatsby Statement Number 87. And what this does is it puts all the leases on the balance sheet. So in the past, where things might have just been expensed, now they will need to go on the balance sheet. We're already working with the accounting team to make sure that the town is in line with that, and will have that properly implemented. There are other things in here that I would encourage you to read at your leisure, various resources and information, but pass by that for now. I will be happy to answer any questions or cover anything in any more detail, if you like.
Council will start to my right backwards. We'll start with Councilman Rivera. Any questions on the auditor presentation?
No, I don't have any questions. I appreciate the work. I appreciate the scrutiny. It's a new company, so I think there was maybe a little learning curve on both sides. I, I will state that your letter to, to us in the beginning was a little bit different than maybe we've gotten in the past. It sounded maybe curt, but I appreciate the work you've done, and I believe that this audit is only going to make us even stronger and a better financial team than, than we already were, which is hard to say, because we were and are one of the best. So thank you very much for taking part.
Councilmember Pogue?
Yeah, can you clarify that insurance issue that you mentioned?
Sure. So when you're self-insured, there's expenses that will accrue as, as the year goes on, and at year end, you might not have received, you might not know of all those expenses yet. And so you need to get what's called an incurred but not reported liability. And generally, this is in conjunction with the insurance administrator that helps say, okay, here's what you've been paying for the last year, two years, and here's an estimate of what we think snapshot in time at December 31st, your liability is for the things that we haven't recorded at that point.
All right, thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions. Thank you for your efforts.
Councilmember Barrington?
You said the Gatsby Statement 87, so that's just related to leases?
Correct.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Sure.
And councilmember Hefta?
Can you elaborate a little bit on the tax receivable on, for the par?
Sure. So in the financial statements, if you look at... Parker Authority for Reinvestment. So on page 19, there would be property taxes receivable and also property taxes levied for the following year. In the general fund, what this is doing is making the Parker Authority for Reinvestment operate in the same way. So there are taxes that are received, but those relate to the next year. And so technically, under Gatsby, what you should have is both a receivable and a, what's called a deferred inflow recorded for that. So it's basically a balance sheet grows up. It doesn't affect income in any way, but it reflects that on the balance sheet.
And that accounts for greater transparency in your report?
Correct.
Thank you.
Sure.
Great. Thanks, sir. Appreciate your time, and next time, we'll make Mr. St. Andrews do the whole presentation just by himself, so...
Thank you so much for your time.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you. Next up on our agenda is the Consent Agenda. Consent Agenda items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion on the consent agenda unless council votes to remove an item for individual discussion. Ordinances on the consent agenda are for introduction only and will not be removed for any discussion. So council, you have 5A through 5E for your consideration.
Mr. Mayor, I move to approve Consent Agenda Items 5A through 5E, please.
I'll second.
Motion was made by council member Rivera, seconded by council member Barrington. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is the first of our public hearings for the night. The first is Parker Main Street Studio Subdivision filing one minor development plat. Mary Munocato is back for this. Great, welcome back.
Yeah, thank you. And good evening, mayor and council, Mary Munocato with Community Development. So again, this is the Parker Main Street Studio filing number one minor development plat application request. The subject property is located in the downtown area, east of Parker Road, on the southeast corner of Main Street and Pike's Peak Drive. Property is bounded on the north by Main Street, to the east by a vacant parcel and the town-owned schoolhouse, cultural event venue, to the west by Pike's Peak Drive, and to the south by another commercial parcel. The property complies with the current downtown zoning, which is Greater Downtown Historic District, and is consistent with the Main Street Master Plan, character area designation of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. The subject property was annexed into the town in 1981 with the original incorporation of the town. The site includes an existing brick building developed in 1965 in Douglas County, which was prior to the town's incorporation. Today, the building houses commercial uses and event space and a music studio. The minor development plat application, known as the Parker Main Street Studio Subdivision, proposes to plat this unplatted parcel of land. The site's approximately .52 acres, propose to be platted into one legal lot of record. Staff has reviewed the proposal and has determined that the project is consistent with the master plan. All plating requirements for the Parker Main Street Studio Subdivision filing one and the land development ordinance have been satisfied. And lastly, public notice requirements have been met. The Planning Commission held a public hearing for the proposed minor development plat on June 23rd and voted unanimously to recommend that town council approve the application. And with that, staff recommends that town council approve the Parker Main Street Studio Subdivision filing one minor development plat. And that concludes staff's presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thanks, Mary. And just for the record, the public hearing on this opened at 7:18. Before we go to questions for staff from the council, I'll start with council member Pogue.
Yeah, this was the original post office in Parker.
That is correct.
And so are they just trying to put the properties together? Do they have development plans? Do you know anything about that?
No, there are no other development plans. So per the land development ordinance, properties need to be platted if, for example, if, if they're going to develop, but since this was brought in from the county, it was already developed. So if Main Street Studio wants to expand, they need to be a platted lot. So this creates a platted lot if they want to expand or do any other development on the lot.
Thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Rivera?
No questions.
Councilman Dyak?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
No questions, and thank you for the historical information. I was wondering, as I always walk by that building, what year it was built.
Yeah.
And so it looks like there might be ability to expand in the back if, if they get this plat.
They get it platted, correct?
Right, correctly.
Yes.
If they want to, and they'd have to come before council again, of course, on that. No, Stacy's saying no.
Oh. Oh, no. It, well, it depends on what they, I guess, would want to do, but if it was a use, that may be a use by special review within that zone district, that may be the only reason to come to council.
Why don't we say future development to the applicant is here? So Laura, maybe you can save that question for, for Ralph when he comes up to get grilled.
Thank you.
Ralph, sitting back there, do I have to come up? Yep, it's your turn, man. Come on up.
I didn't want to surprise Ralph. If he wants to...
So I know the applicant is here. I don't know if you have a presentation, but I'm sure the council has some questions for you on the development and the, and the project.
No, I, I don't have a presentation. I was just thrilled to be here at seven. I'm Ralph Newman. I'm owner, not owner of the property, but I'm operator of Music at Main Street and Studio at Main Street, so...
Great. So for the record, I, I see them right over here. If you'll state your name and address for the record.
Ralph Newman. The address of my house, 1945 Dolomite Way in Castle Rock.
That's fine.
So...
That's fine.
No, at present, we don't have any, like, immediate expansion plans. The property is just, you know, it's been outside of the boundary with plating, so we're trying to get that done. Right now, I guess the most immediate thing would be just putting on a patio on the backside, which has gone through all the approval process and everything. So we don't have any really immediate plans to, to do anything with it, other than just keep operating, so...
Okay, let's continue with applicant's questions. Councilmember Hefta, do you want to continue questions?
No, it's a, it's a really nice building.
Oh, yeah. It's an older building, but it's a nice building.
Lots of folks coming there.
Solid.
Solid. Thank you.
It's been there since that time, and it's still standing, so...
Councilmember Barrington, any questions?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Dyak?
Any questions?
Of Ralph, specific to this property?
No.
Okay. Councilmember Pogue?
I just have one. When was it actually built? In the 60s?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, it was originally the post office.
Yeah.
And then I guess they turned it into a, like a Napa Auto Parts at some point.
Action Auto.
Yeah. And then, well, it was just an, it was like an auto parts shop, so the...
They had both.
Yeah, and then they built the, they built the garage on at some point there. So it kind of worked to our advantage, because I guess that post office is built like a bunker. So it's like, it is solid. So they had to build the garage the same specification, so that thing hasn't moved at all, so...
Thank you.
Councilman Rivera?
No questions.
Okay. With that, we will go to any public comments on this matter. We'll open the public comments at 7:24. Anyone wishing to make public comment on this project in the room or on Zoom?
If you wish to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand in Zoom. There is not.
Okay, then we will close the public comment period at 7:25. I think you're good, and we'll come back for deliberation here.
All right.
We'll start with Councilman Rivera on deliberations.
Thank you. This, to me, is, is cleanup, something that was identified through work on Ralph's behalf, or you started. I appreciate it. You are the tenant and not the owner, yet you are dedicated to this property. So thank you, and thank you for improving our town.
No questions, thank you.
All right.
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
No questions. My understanding, sorry, my understanding was also that this was just kind of a, a cleanup for something that should have been done a while ago.
Any comments, Councilmember Hefta?
No, and this appears to be in character with the Parker 2035 Master Plan. Thank you.
Great. With that, I'll entertain a motion on this plat.
I move to approve Parker Main Street Studio Subdivision, based on staff findings.
I'll second that.
Motion is made by Councilman Rivera, seconded by Councilmember Pogue. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. That wasn't so bad, was it? All right, easy peasy. Great, moving on to item number 6B, the 20 Mile Village F2 AMD1 L9B1 gas station used by special review. There has been a request by the applicant to move this out to a date certain of 9/6, so I'll entertain a motion to move to a date certain of 9/6.
So moved?
Second.
Motion is made by council member Rivera, seconded by councilman Dyak. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Dyak?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Next up is Resolution Number 22-037, a resolution to adopt the 2022 update for the Open Space Trails and Greenway Master Plan as part of the Town of Parker Master Plan. We've got Jeremiah. This is continued from July 11th, 2022, and I'll open the public hearing on this matter at 7:26.
All right, good evening, Jeremiah.
This is continued from July 11th, 2022, and I'll open the public hearing on this matter at 7:26.
All right. Good evening. Jeremiah Fettig. I'll be giving staff's presentation on the 2022 update to the Open Space Trails Greenways Master Plan. The Open Space Trails Greenways Master Plan was adopted by Town Council in 2004. It went through a major update in 2010. Since then, there's been no further revisions to this plan. The plan is used to guide and provide criteria for open space preservation and acquisition, provides criteria for important trail connections, and also contains lists of missing trails, connections, and maps. The list is used to guide the capital improvement program, provide input or guidance to the budgeting process, and also is used when reviewing land use applications in the planning office. The master plan vision is to provide an integrated and cohesive open space and trail system that fulfills the recreation, non-motorized movement, ecological, and aesthetic needs of the town. So as I mentioned, the plan in its current form is now 12 years old, so this update is very minor, very limited in nature. The purpose of the update is to reflect new trails that have been constructed since last update, 2010, also remove completed trail connections, add newly identified missing trail connections to this plan. Staff coordinated with both Engineering Public Works and the Parks and Recreation Departments on this project. And one thing of note is a major update rewrite of this plan is intended for 2025, so at that time, we'd go through and do a complete overhaul and update to the plan. A quick overview of the updates to the plan include revisions to three of the eight maps, minor text revisions to correct some spelling errors that were caught, updates to numerical data for open space acreages and miles of trails, text updates to correspond to those revisions to the maps that we've made, and revisions to Trail Maintenance Section, just to align with current town practices. So updates to the three maps were to map one, existing and approved open space. This was a minor update. We just wanted to capture those different acreages of preserved open space. Updates to map two, which is existing and approved trails, just wanted to capture those new trails that had been constructed to get those trail miles in there. And then, most notably, map three, which is missing trails connections, had the most changes. So five new trail connections were identified, nine completed connections within the town's planning area were removed, and then three completed connections outside of the town's planning area were removed from that map. So this is obviously difficult to see, but this is just a list of the five new missing trails connections. We'll dive into those next, but this, just to show what we did, we'll go into the first connection that was identified was to connect the trail running in the West Creek Development to Parker Road. So this would be an at-grade crossing across Parker Road to Crown Crest Boulevard. Additionally, this would, you know, circuitous route, but you can get to Cherry Creek Trail if this connection's made. So staff and the public thought that was beneficial to include in there. The second missing connection is to extend the east-west trail at Cherry Creek Trail to the Canterbury Public Service Company Trail. So this trail would provide an east-west connection to the Cherry Creek Trail. Once again, it'd be an at-grade crossing across Parker Road, but it would provide that east-west Third connection that staff identified and the public identified and that we're proposing is to extend the Canterbury Public Service Company Trail north across Sulfur Gulch and Main Street to connect to a future trail that is proposed out in the county. Fourth missing connection identified is to connect the future Trails and Anthology across future Oak Gulch Trail to Cherry Creek Trail. So the red there is proposed trails, and the future will be constructed. Ours is the purple shows up blue here, so just to provide that connection between the two. And the final connection is a spur off of the High Plains Trail or the E470 Trail south to, I believe, Cottonwood Drive. So once again, just trying to provide connection north, and then you can go west and cross Booker Road at the new above-grade crossing that's being installed now. So in conclusion, so this is, once again, a very minor update. We just wanted to focus on those missing links. So if you're going through the plan, you see other errors, other things that need to be changed on the maps, scope creep, right? Staff didn't want to get into that and go through and keep revising as we're planning on bringing this forward in 2025 with the full update. At the June 23 regular meeting, Planning Commission unanimously recommended Town Council approve this item, and staff additionally recommends Town Council adopt the 2022 update of the Open Space Trails and Greenways Master Plan. So that concludes staff's presentation. I will stand for any questions.
Great, thanks, Jeremiah. I will start to my right with Councilmember Pogue.
Yeah, just a quick question. You mentioned that this was to update the maintenance of trails to the current Parker standard. What were the major changes that you had to look at?
For that, I would defer to our legal staff. That came from their office, if you can recall, Jamie.
I know that Kelsey did the initial review. We received a lot of information. I believe they worked with the county as well with developing the new information. We were also looking at some of the terminology, which we will be addressing with the 25 update, some of the other information.
But as far as the actual change to maintenance, what was the major change?
And I don't know the answer to that. I will have to follow up and get back to you.
All right. Thank you.
Thanks, Jamie. Councilman Rivera?
No questions.
Councilman Diack?
No questions, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
So how do you identify the missing connections? I saw that there was public input.
Yeah.
How do they go about doing this?
Yeah, so I should have clarified in there. So through the bike and ped master planning process, you know, we've had those maps up online on Let's Talk Parker where we, you know, asked for missing connections to be identified. So the public has had an opportunity to put pins and mark down and contact us with where they've identified those missing connections. We also were at the farmer's market, had a map, and then the open houses, both virtual and in person, we had a map where people could be like, oh, you know, I'd walk here, but it ends, want to have some route to get to Cherry Creek Trail. So through those efforts, we use that to leverage into creating these missing trail connections.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, you stated that the trail maintenance is to align with adopted town policies, standards, and current practices. I know that town policies are in writing. Are the standards and current practices also in writing?
So it's just to do with more maintenance, right? We do maintain, we do plow. We just wanted to clarify, make sure that they stayed the same as what Engineering Public Works, Parks are currently doing on the ground.
It's active operation practices, then?
Right, right.
Okay, just to clarify that.
Sweeping, right? Making sure there's no debris on there, just that type of thing.
Yeah, and thank you for identifying this, these connections. This is going to help a lot of walkers and bikers.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Great. And council, we will open this up for public comment at 7:35. Anybody wishing to make public comment on this resolution in the room? See none? Chris, do we have anybody online?
If there's anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a public comment on this item, please raise your hand. There is not.
Okay, with that, we'll bring it back to the council for any debate or consideration. Councilmember Pogue, anything?
I don't have anything else.
Councilman Diack?
Just a quick comment. I kind of watched this through the whole development of it, attended the open houses and watched the citizens interact and stick circles on pieces and write down notes, and one was at the field house. I remember talking to a bunch of them. I saw one of them up here. So I just think that it's very, very important to point out, our master plan is dynamic. It is something that is our guiding document, but it is written strictly, not strictly, it is written with the cooperation of our citizens in a very, very tangible way. This is a perfect example of that. And then frankly, another example, tonight, we had a discussion earlier about a trail, and I noticed that it was kind of a roundabout way that trail got to the Cherry Creek. And then sure enough, tonight, in this plan, that trail gets to the Cherry Creek quicker. So again, really, really fascinating how it actually does work. And please, 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 if you get an opportunity, please participate in our open houses. This is an example of how you are active in our community, so thank you.
Great. Councilman Diack?
No deliberation, thank you.
Councilmember Barrington?
I think this is just, I love this. It's, I mean, we have such a comprehensive trail system for our residents, but then if there are these gaps, you can't be everywhere all the time. And so I think the fact that we can rely on our citizens and consider their input, and we have such an active community, so I just think this is in line with our strategic goals. Thank you.
And Councilmember Hefta?
Thank you. As Councilmember Barrington said, these goals and strategies adapted by the town, they promote active transportation and contribute to Parker's healthy lifestyle. And as you look around Parker, you do see more people enjoying our trails and our parks. You see less people actually on the open road. You see more people on the Cherry Creek Trail. So identification of these gaps and then making those missing trail connections actually allows more people to enjoy our trails and actually gets them off the road if they're inclined to bike on the road, where it is much more dangerous than on the trails. Although, there is a 15 mile per hour speed limit on the trails. Most people probably violate that, but it's still safer. Thanks.
I consider that my goal, to go 50 miles an hour. But with that, council, I'll entertain a motion on resolution number 22-037.
I move to approve resolution number 22-037.
I'll second.
Give that to Hefta. Motion is made by Councilmember Pogue, seconded by Councilmember Hefta. Rivera?
Aye.
Pogue?
Aye.
Diack?
Yes.
Barrington?
Yes.
Hefta?
Yes.
And that passes five to zero. Thank you, Jeremiah. Last up is the resolutions. Resolution number 22-039, a resolution to allow partial waiver of subsection 13-01-140B of the Parker Municipal Code to extend the expiration date of the use by special review for Parker Homestead filing number one, amendment two, lot one, for a gas station. Stacy Nurgur, you don't have to repeat that now.
All right, I like it. So, just what he said, good evening, Mayor and Council. So this is a resolution to extend the expiration date for the Parker Homestead Use by Special Review gas station until December 31st, 2022. There's some technical difficulties, so I'm just going to keep going. So the subject site is located at the southwest corner of Chambers Road and Double Angel Road. The site is located within the mixed-use neighborhood center planning area of the Parker Homestead plan development. The use by special review application was approved by Town Council on April 19th, 2021. The use by special review approval is valid for a period of 12 months from the date of approval unless a grading or building permit is pulled. The code allows a planning director to extend the expiration date an additional 90 days. The action extends the use by special review. We have done this, and it extended it until July 19th, 2022, but this exhausts the administrative mechanisms for the applicant. After the Town Council approval of the use by special review, the applicant submitted a replat application and a site plan application, both to develop the site. Each application is under review for compliance with the town's development standards, and the applicant has indicated that they need additional time to respond to review comments and demonstrate compliance with the applicable standards. The requested extension would preserve the applicant's approval while they complete the development review process for the replat and the site plan applications. Under section 1301-100 of the Parker Municipal Code, Town Council may authorize waivers from provisions of the land development ordinance if deemed to be in the public interest and not impair the intent or purposes of the land development ordinance. Staff believes that this request is in the public interest for the following three reasons. The use has been planned at this location and has been reviewed and determined to meet the nine approval criteria. Approval of the waiver would provide a greater efficiency in the development process, and the proposal is consistent with the policies and recommendations of the Parker 2035 Master Plan. The applicant's request for a partial waiver of the LDO for an additional approval extension until December 31st of 2022 is discretionary in nature. If the Town Council does not support the extension request, the applicant's use by special review approval will expire on July 19th, 2022. The applicant would then have the option of resubmitting a new use by special review application for the proposed gasoline station or withdraw their project altogether. However, tonight recommends that Town Council approve the resolution 22-039, which would extend the expiration date until December 31st of 2022. This concludes staff's presentation, and I do have the applicant present tonight to answer any questions you may have.
Okay. Stacy, does your applicant have a presentation at all, which we usually save for public hearing, just available for questions?
Just available.
Okay, so council, we'll go staff questions, and we'll go any applicant questions you might have. We'll start, Councilmember Hefta on staff questions?
No questions.
Councilmember Barrington?
I don't see... Is there any reason not to extend it?
In the staff's opinion, we are working hard to get the site plan approved in order for them to get a grading permit. We just haven't gotten there yet. The applicant has done everything we've asked for, so I do not see a reason not to extend it.
Okay, thank you.
Councilman Diack?
No questions.
Councilmember Pogue?
No questions.
Councilman Rivera? Okay, with that, just by nod, anyone have a question for the applicant? No? Okay, so we'll go with the applicant questions if they don't have a presentation. Great. So we'll open this up for public comment at 7:43. Anyone in the room wishing to make a public comment on the matter? See none? Chris, do we have anybody online?
Is there anyone on Zoom who wishes to make a comment on this item? Please raise your hand. There is not.
All right, we'll bring it back to, we'll close out at 7:43. We'll bring it back to the council for any final comments or debate. Councilmember Hefta?
Yes, I support applicants delaying when they need to delay and also reviewing their use by special review application and ensuring that they have the proper facts and analysis and findings on the nine criteria. When an applicant comes before us, we evaluate use by special review on the nine criteria and the facts, analysis, and findings, and the input in the applicant section is very important to the application. And so having a thoroughly prepared packet with good information and analysis specific to the site is very important as we sit up here on Town Council, because we do have nine criteria to evaluate that by. So I am all for this applicant taking the extra time to do a thorough job on their application.
Great. Councilmember Barrington?
No comments, thank you.
Great. Councilman Diack?
No concerns with the extension, thank you.
Great. Councilmember Pogue?
No questions at this time.
Councilman Rivera?
Yeah, I too agree with Councilwoman Hefta. I agree with the staff. I deem this waiver to be in the public interest, and it does not impair the intent or purposes of the LDO, definitely for the reasons that staff has stated, specifically item two. When we looked at the history of this applicant's work, for lack of a better word, constant busy. I mean, it was every other month that they were in Town Hall working on this project. And to me, that shows, not a collective project in any sense. In fact, it shows to me that this applicant is working very hard to get this done, and it is a project that does have that extra layer of scrutiny.